Okay, and I've got the microphone on. Why don't you do a test for us?
Who, me?
Yep, yep, we can hear you really well.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right. That was our, that was our test. I think we're ready to give.
Hello? It's nice to hear everybody's voice.
Yeah. So the number is two four nine oh. Oh, okay. Okay. Two four nine oh.
Ready?
Yeah, the number, Katie. Okay. Yep, we're ready then.
Okay, he's gonna be tech support tonight. Shane Goodson. Ron, always a pleasure. You're officially the audience.
Do we have a full house?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we have, we have Ron and Officer Venator there. We have Emily on the media table over there by herself. It's a pretty quiet space right now. Wearing my Greyhound mask today in support of homecoming week for the Greyhound Nation. It's gonna be a good week. A different kind of homecoming, but homecoming nevertheless.
We will, we will call the Carmel Clay School Board Regular Session Meeting for Tuesday, September 29th to order. Madam Secretary, roll call.
All board members are present. Leila Spendenberg is on the phone.
Here.
Thank you, Lynn. I do have permission to say that Leila is participating by telephone because she's recovering from back surgery, and we are glad that she is recovering and we're glad that she's with us on the phone. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. These unprecedented times have caused me to start our meeting with thanks and words of encouragement, but really I should start every board meeting thanking our teachers, administrators, and all of our staff for what they do for our students. They give so much of themselves. I know this year has not been easy for anyone, but once again, please remember, we are better together, together we achieve, and we are the best at getting better. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Seeing that there is nobody here for public comment, we will move on to consent. On consent, we are approving personnel, claims, payroll, obsolete equipment that is being donated to net literacy, gifts from Kennedy Insurance Agency, Indiana Humanities Council, to Orchard Park Elementary, to assist in developing a project titled Advancing Racial Equity Collection Development, gift from the patrons of Creekside Middle School to the Performing Arts Department, and two from Gen Youth, the American Dairy Association, one to Carmel High School Coffee Shop, and the other two Carmel Clay School Food Services. We are also approving the minutes from our workshop meeting on August 12th, the minutes of our executive session on August 18th, the minutes of our regular session on August 24th. May I have a motion to approve consent? Thank you, Pam. A second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Leila. We'll go with Katie's second. We will all vote in, if you're in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All in favor, motion or consent carries five to zero. Next, we will move to public hearings. We actually have three public hearings on the agenda for this evening, so at this time, we will suspend a regular board meeting and open a public hearing to allow for public input regarding three matters. Mr. McMichael, do you have any comments?
Yes, at the September 14th board meeting, a presentation was given to the board in the public with regard to the 2021 budgets, as well as the capital projects plan and the bus replacement plan. And so, the purpose of this hearing is to give opportunity for public input prior to the board considering adoption of this budget. And so, after the public input and at our next regular meeting in late October, these, the budget and these plans will be presented to the board and recommended for your approval. And then they'll be submitted to the state, because they also require state approval and by the Department of Local Government Finance, and then they become effective January 1st. So this would be the time for opportunity for any, any public comment relating to the budget or the two plans.
Thank you, Roger. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to make a comment on the 2021 budget, the 2021 capital project plan, or the 2021 bus replacement plan? There being none, before we close, I will ask if the board members have any questions for Mr. McMichael? No, thank you. We will close the public hearing and go back to the regular school board meeting. Next item on the agenda is action. No, we hold all the, we did them all at the same time.
I'm sorry?
Nope. We combined them, but thank you, Colleen, for keeping us honest. We will move to action items. The, I guess, first and I think only action item is approval of redistricting criteria and process. Mr. McMichael?
Okay, we're gonna see if we can get a couple pictures up here. I'm not sure who's doing this. There we go. I thought before we started actually talking about the redistricting process, I'd like to remind the public mostly, the board, of course, is quite aware and has probably seen some of these recent pictures, but these two elementary schools are becoming very real now that they're, continue to be under construction. And so, I'll just show four pictures real quick. This is a drone view of Carmel Elementary School, and so, you can see the current school in front and see that the new elementary school will sit at the back of the property and at somewhat of a diagonal. And then this is just another shot of it from the other side, looking back on it. Clay Center Elementary is a little farther along. The board's aware that we started this project in the fall and did some site work, and so, but they'll both be substantially complete by July 1st. And so, this is taken from roughly, from Clay Center Road, and so, that's, that's what you're looking at here is the front of the school, and at the very back, they recently put the first layer of paving down for the, for the bus drive. And this is from the other corner, and you can see the, the four ballfields in the school, and then you'll see we have a retention pond to the east, and that pond will be fenced for safety and security reasons. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to show those before we get into the report. So, with the construction of these schools, particularly Clay Center, necessitates redistricting. We, we were getting to a point of needing to do some, some redistricting and balancing, particularly of our two far west side elementary schools, College Wood and West Clay. And so, I wanted to present to the board the process that we're going through, and then ask that you approve the criteria that we're using. So, we're beginning the process, and the board has employed a company by the name of Cooperative Strategies to assist in this process. They're a national K-12 planning firm, and they've already been very helpful as we've begun the process, and I'm sure they'll continue to be very helpful as they kind of guide us through this process. One of the things that we're really emphasizing is, is we're giving lots of opportunity for public participation and input, and so, the first thing we're doing, and one of the first things we're doing is to form focus groups, and there will be multiple parent focus groups, then there will be a focus group for community members who do not have children in school, as well as administrative input and teacher staff input and so forth. And so, just today, we put some information, I believe that may have been shared with the board, to get the process started, and we've invited people to serve on those, and then we will randomly select, because there will likely be more interest in serving on the groups than, than we would have need for in terms of the numbers of groups that we're having. However, beyond just the initial input, with the focus groups, we will develop options, and then we'll put those options online. So, literally, anybody that wants to will have an opportunity to, to see the options that are, as they continue to be refined, and also to comment on those. And then later, in early November, there will be community meetings at Carmel High School, and we're planning on those being in person, but also, they'll be live streamed. So, if you can't make it in person, you'll also have an opportunity to participate via the internet. And then, by late November, we'll come to the board and present what we anticipate to be the preferred option, and then asking for approval by, at the December 14th meeting. So, we expect to be through the process by the middle of December, and then at that point, all of our community members and parents will know what, what their school district is and what school they would be attending. So, one of the, the second thing that's, that's really important before we start is, is we need to understand the criteria that we're going to use, and we want our public to understand the criteria that we're using as we approach the redistricting. And so, there's, there are four criteria that we're recommending. And the first is, is that we'll start with attempting to assign students to their closest school. Now, we know that not every student will, will be able to go to the closest school because invariably, there, there are schools where the closest school would have far more students than the school would have capacity for. So, at that point, we'll, we'll look kind of to the second closest school. Unfortunately, we're a rather compact school district, so it may be very short distance to kind of the second school, if you will. So, so we're fortunate in that respect. But that'll be the one criteria that we're recommending. The second is, is that, that we would attempt to balance our schools relative to capacity, but also take into consideration our demographic study, because as the board is aware, in some schools, more than others, we continue to grow, and we may have some schools that that may project a decline. So, when this is finished, if you're a, a school that we anticipate further growth, then the initial enrollment in that school would be lower in order to anticipate and have room for future growth. And, and the third criteria will be is, we will attempt to keep neighborhoods and subdivisions intact, which means that that won't always be the case. It depends on the size of the subdivision, and, and some subdivisions are so large that, while it's one subdivision, there may be divisions in there where, where not everybody feels that they're, they're completely a part of that, even that subdivision. And then the fourth, which we fully expect to maintain, is that entire elementary schools will transition to the same middle school, and that's the way it is now. There had been a time in Carmel where we had a school, or one I know, that when it, when they went to middle school, half the school would go to one middle school and half the other. And so, we've, we've avoided that for a number of years, and we plan on still doing that. Then, as I said, we'll have the focus groups giving input. We'll have one principal focus group, one district administration focus group, two non-parent community member focus groups, and nine parent focus groups. And there'll be about 10 to 12 participants on each group. And then, as I said, we will, in Cooperative Strategies, will assist in this effort. We'll have a website, there'll just be a link to that site that will have all the information about this, all the announcements, eventually, the options, opportunity for, for comment regarding the options, and just all, any information that's relative to, to the process. Our schedule, as I alluded to, we'll have the focus groups, and we'll do that between October the 8th and the 12th, and then we'll have community meetings on the 3rd through the 5th. And we, we do recognize that the 3rd is Election Day, but it's also right before fall break. And so, recognizing that the community meeting will be at 7:00 that evening, the election process will be over by then, and we'll see what the participation is. We will have up to three meetings, depending upon the interest in coming to the meeting. So, we'll start with one meeting, and we're likely to give some type of a ticket so that, because with the COVID situation, we have to limit and manage the, the numbers of people that can attend. We think, we, it'll be about, in the high school auditorium, and we anticipate about 150. So, the auditorium was, has a normal capacity of about 1,500. So, you can see with the distancing and so forth, that brings that down considerably. And as I said, then on November the 23rd, that school board meeting, we'll present the preferred option to the board, and then on the 14th, we'd ask for the board's approval. And we'll continue to emphasize that anybody in the community, and certainly parents with school-aged children, should, should really follow this process. We would not want them to think that if they live on the east side of town, for example, since the school is, new school's being built on the west, that that won't affect them, because that's not the case. In a redistricting process, it's kind of a domino effect, and, and of course, we don't know yet to the extent of, and the numbers of students that might get redistricted, but, but we would really encourage parents to kind of track this process and, and be aware of it. Certainly, we'd welcome their input. So, with that, I will respond to questions you have, that you would have, and then we would ask for your approval, specifically with regard to the criteria that we're using.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Before we go to questions, may I have a motion to approve the redistricting criteria and process?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. A second? Thank you, Pam. Now, questions, Katie?
I see it in our packet, but could you go over the different focus groups and how many there will be?
Yes. Okay, so we'll have a principal focus group. We will have a district administration focus group. We'll have two non-parent community member focus groups, and nine parent focus groups. And there'll be 10 to 12 participants on each one of these groups.
Thank you. And then my second question is, can you go into a little bit more about Cooperative Strategies, the company that will be doing this, and particularly, what role do they play in all of this?
Okay, so, again, Cooperative Strategies is a, they're a firm out of Ohio, near Columbus, Ohio, Dublin, I believe, and, but they're actually a national firm. They do work all over the country, and, and this is one thing that they do. They assist communities with redistricting, and they, they do other things as well in terms of, they do some, you know, projections for demographics and so forth. But what they will provide is that, that, one, they're, they're proposing the format in terms of, like the focus groups, for example, they suggested that we would have focus groups. And of course, we've done redistricting in the past, but we've done it internally. So, the process, we're not, it's not foreign to us, but, but they bring a lot of experience that they've had, and, and which is, we anticipate will be very helpful. They also will create a website that will house all this information. They will use GPS system to assist in the, in the, in the redistricting process, so that we'll have all the data in terms of where every student lives and so forth. And then, they have already provided maps and visual information that would, that will show, for example, they have like a heat map that shows kind of the density of our community, as it relates to students, and then they have more specific information. They've taken, for example, our current districts, and I'm talking about elementary districts, and, and then on the location of our schools, and they've already provided information about the closest school, for example, and if you saw this information, you would see that, you know, we have some schools that their closest school would, it would put the school over capacity by maybe, they might be at 130%. So, obviously, that won't work, and, and so, every stu, it just kind of shows that every student will not be able to go to their closest school. And so, they provide a variety of information like that. They will conduct these focus meet, group meetings, and, and they'll collect and disseminate the information from that, and then they will put together kind of initial options, and then as they, as we continue to have input and community meetings, they will take that information and, and discuss internally with us, but that, also, and the impact that that would have to the options. And so, they just continue to, to lead and manage the, the process of redistricting. So, they have that expertise, but of course, they don't live here. So, so we'll certainly work together, because we know the community, and, and they know, you know, this process that they use, and, and so, we believe that between the, you know, with both parties, that we'll have a very good process and, and a positive outcome.
I can share that I, I have worked with this company before and, on a couple of occasions, and they're formerly called The Young Richter. So, when you see the, the website, I think it still, still says The Young Richter on it, but it is a very transparent process, and there are many opportunities for parents to be engaged in the process. So, between the focus groups, there's, there'll always be an online way that, that parents can engage online as well, if they're not able to go to meetings. There's just a ton of opportunities to, to weigh in on the, the different boundaries that they have. The technology's amazing that they have, and it's very fast. And when I look back now, if we had to do all the work that it takes to do redistricting now in the middle of this pandemic, it would have been, you know, very, very taxing. I can't imagine how we'd get through that. But, but yeah, I think that the community will find it to be a very good process, and you as well, and I encourage you to be a part of that. I know all of you were talked about maybe observing a focus group, and I think that's a great idea, so you can kind of experience it. And, and appreciate Mr. McMichael's work with that group and his team, and, and it's a tough process to go through, but I think this makes it very clear, and, and also, it's a good communication of why decisions are made, why lines are where they are, and, and it's very easy to try different options and, and very quickly get the kind of information that can let you know which way you need to go. So, I'm looking forward to it, as much as you can look forward to redistricting, but, you know, it's probably, probably, it's usually a seven to 10-year cycle when, when school buildings get unbalanced, and, and when they become unbalanced, it becomes very inefficient, and, and a lot of stress is put on, especially like food service and, and recess and, and a lot of the auxiliary type things. So, you know, when you go through these, it's, it's sometimes a tough process, sometimes an emotional process, but in doing that, you rebalance the district and the, and then, and with care taken for areas that grow, so that at the end of the day, that, you know, the students really have a much better environment to learn in. And, and then, once this, this process ends in December, the whole second semester will be about transitioning the students and making that a special and a very positive experience. And I've worked with parent groups before that really took that on as, we're gonna make this a positive experience for our kids and for everybody, and, and it actually was a whole lot of fun. And then finally, the only thing I would say is that we're fortunate in Carmel, that all of our schools are very strong. So, you're not moving from, you know, a strong school to a weak school. You're going from a strong school to a strong school. So, that's a, that's a real blessing we have in the district. So, anyhow, it's a good group to work with, and I appreciate Mr. McMichael's leadership on this. Thank you.
Lynn?
I have two questions here. So, when you describe the criteria, you use the first, the second, and the third, and so on. So, is there a priority between the four criteria? So, if we have a criteria here in conflict, how do you solve that conflict? And another question is, the focus group meeting starts October 8th, and when would the website be up?
Website's up today, so.
Oh, okay.
It's just, you know, we're just starting, but.
I didn't catch that.
It's up right now, so people could, could actually go to it and go to our website, and then they would click on our link to go to the redistricting website. So, to answer your first question, we'll start with closest school. I don't know that there's particularly a priority, but the closest schools, I said, it'll be in balance with capacity. So, so we, there would be a point where the capacity would override the closest school, because we would not intend to redistrict and start with a school that would. to redistrict and start with a school that would be over capacity because of a desire to put students at their closest school. And then we don't see that there will be, we don't anticipate there to be a conflict with all the elementary school transitioning to the same middle school. And then subdivisions kind of ties in with closest school and also balancing the capacity. And so, for example, we sometime, if we have a large subdivision, we could, we could find ourselves needing to split that subdivision in some way. Because if we sent all the students to the one school, then it would push it over capacity. And it could be that if it's a large enough subdivision, part of it could actually be closer to a different school than the other half. And so that's, get into some of those complexities.
Thank you.
And Lynn, I would also add that the very first sentence on the criteria is to the greatest extent possible. Because it is, as Mr. McMichael explained, it's, it's got a lot of moving parts to it. And so there isn't really a hierarchy of criteria as much as you're going to do, do the best you can to the highest degree possible in each one of those areas.
And to clarify, when you said that this will be on the internet, to follow up on Lynn's question, you meant the CHS website? Or is there going to be a different website?
Well, it'll be, it'll be on the district website, access to it. You'll start on the district website. And then there's a link on our website that will take you to, it's really Cooperative Strategies website that has the specific information. And like a lot of this information, for example.
And the link will be under what heading?
Redistricting. It'll be very obvious.
It'll be obvious?
I think probably is right now. If you go to our website, you'll see, it'll be obvious.
Okay.
That'll say redistrict.
For the, for grandparents who might want to be on this, these committees, would they be considered the non-parent or the parent?
I would believe they would be the non-parent. And again, it's not that they're not parents, but it's parents that currently have children in school right now.
Okay. And then you have the presentation of the preferred option to the school board on November 23rd. You say preferred option. Will there be, could there be changes made to that after they present it? And will parents continue to be able to have input between November 23rd and December 14th?
Well, there won't be formal input in terms of, at that point, we're really saying that, or anticipating that we'll have a recommended or preferred option. And but as always, your board meetings are public meetings, and there's opportunity for public comment. And there's always opportunity to communicate and offer opinions or comments anytime anybody in the community shows, chooses to. But we do not anticipate providing additional public input for purposes of considering, you know, to modify the plan. But until the board adopts it, you know, it's not, it's not adopted.
So if there are things that we need to tweak just a little bit, we feel that aren't quite right, we can, we can do that, since it's just a preferred option?
Yeah, I wouldn't put it that way. I would say that the administration's expectation is, is that we've gone through a process, and this, we believe, is the best option for the school district. And that we've given every opportunity for every, every opinion or comment that anybody would choose to make. And we would encourage them, therefore, to make those comments prior to the November meeting. Because that, I want to make it very clear that that, we do anticipate that administratively, we feel that we will have been through this process by then and will have the recommended option. And so the time to consider that and have opinions on it and comments on it would be prior to that meeting.
So we will be brought along through the process so that we're not surprised when we get this preferred option?
Well, you'll see the same information as the public and maybe more. But certainly that, I mean, everybody will see the options that are out there. And so I don't think there would be any surprises at that point. But we do have to get to a point where, you know, when we go to that meeting, I wouldn't anticipate that we'll put that out to the public before we would recommend it to the school board.
Leila, do you have any questions on this?
No, I've just been listening to the questions of my fellow board members, and I'm content at this point. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Roger, I just want to clarify that the non-parent focus groups and the parent focus groups are going to be via Zoom?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So there being no more questions from the board, we will now vote to approve the redistricting criteria, which consists of, to the greatest extent possible, students will be assigned to their closest school, the school facilities will be balanced relative to capacity, taking into consideration the demographic study information, neighborhoods will be kept, neighborhoods slash subdivisions will be kept intact, and the entire elementary schools will transition to the same middle school. We will have a number of focus groups and community presentations with a presentation of the preferred slash recommended option to the school board on November 23rd. And, I'm sorry, yeah, on November 23rd. And then on December 14th, it will be brought before us for approval. With this matter, since Leila's participating via telephone, we'll take roll call. Katie, how do you vote? Lynn?
Yes.
Pam?
Hi.
Leila?
Yes.
And I vote in favor of. So motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we will move to discussion. First item on discussion is donation of some property to the city of Carmel. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. The city has approached us as they are planning for a roundabout at Fourth Street and Main Street and on the west side of Carmel High School. And so they're requesting a very small amount of property to do that project. I'll show you. They anticipate doing, doing this roundabout either in the summer of 2021, when we're out of school, and possibly 2022. They, they've not committed to that yet. We do not feel that, I think the amount of property is like 0.05 acres. So it's, it's basically some grass areas on either side of the road. It does not create any issues with us as far as property that we use. It doesn't encroach on any parking or anything like that. So we would recommend your approval for this. It's property's owned by the holding corporation, building corporation. And so they, they would be a part of this process because they actually hold title to it right now. So you can see here, they're rendering of the, of the roundabout. And so I would respond to questions that you might have.
Do we have, do we have any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Leila.
Roger, I'm not necessarily opposed to the, the donation of the property. It is a very small sliver of property. I'm actually more concerned about the roundabout in this area because it is so heavily used by pedestrian and vehicular traffic before and after school. And I'm very curious to know, since you've sat in on some of these meetings, how is the design of this roundabout going to protect our pedestrians, mainly our children crossing the street during these very busy times?
I haven't been a part of those conversations, Ron. I don't know, do you have a comment that you'd make on that? Yes.
I'm having a problem hearing Roger.
Okay, I haven't, I asked Ron Farren if he, I've not been, been in the meetings with the city. And so I've asked Ron to come to the podium and
Oh, I see.
Offer any input that he might have.
We haven't had any meetings to date. We've been, had some just general information from them. The descriptions we've heard about the crosswalks would be similar to what is on Range Line, where the raised bump, raised. And I think, or if, and have the crosswalk lights. So it'll be actually similar to the one we just put in on 136th Street down by the stadium. So there's a spot in the middle where they can stop in case they can't make it all the way across. But then there are lights, flashing lights, then it would control for pedestrians.
Okay, thank you.
Ron, so just looking at the drawing, I'm assuming the red is the raised crosswalk?
Yes. Yeah, that's where the crosswalks are.
So you, so the traffic going through there, even if it's, it has to slow down because it's, is bigger or bigger than what would be a speed bump?
Yeah, it's similar. Yes, it's very similar to what you experienced going through Carmel on Range Line. And I don't think the crosswalk on 136th is raised, but it does have the flashing beacons. So, but it'll be similar in design to some of those so that there's control for the pedestrians.
Okay. And then it looks like the alignment is they're really taking more property from the library side than they are from our side.
Yeah, I don't think they're getting into, in terms of where the actual property lines are at, they're probably not getting much of anybody's property. It just looks like it because they're eating into their right of way a lot with the, with it. And then they just need small pieces to kind of finish it out. That's why they take, there's just a grass area on both sides of the street because the parking lot on the west side is ours and they, and they aren't touching the parking lot. But there's more grass there now than, than there would be after this. Same thing on the east side. And I think that's really the case with the library. Because you can see the parking lot for the library there, and they aren't touching it. So I think in general, it's mostly within their right of way. It's just these little slivers they need to kind of finesse it out.
Pam, cut.
Yeah, to follow up on what Leila asked, that was a very good question, Leila. The library is going to be closed for what, two years?
I'm not, something like that, but I don't know exactly.
Okay. So then our students probably will not be using those crosswalks unless they will be given access to the parking because the library won't be using the parking. Will they be able to use those parking lots over there?
Well, I think all their parking lots will be under construction because they're building on the back end of the building where
Not the one across the street.
On Fourth Avenue?
Because the library's over there.
I don't know what the, could well be, though, that'll be used by construction. Because they're going to have to have someplace to stay their equipment and materials to build the library. So my guess is that's what that parking lot's going to become during construction.
Okay, so we won't have students basically using that for
I don't believe so.
A while.
Yeah.
But after that, I hope people will pay attention.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? No, thank you. And I'll just make a comment. I mean, I did look at the documents that were provided. And I assume we're still waiting for the exact legal description from the deed, but other than that, it looks fine. Thank you. Next, we will move to transfer to the rainy day fund. Mr. McMichael, you're up again.
So here, we'll be recommending a transfer of funds to the rainy day fund, really for two reasons. For, I'll preface that by saying that Carmel's a district that while we've had a rainy day fund for at least 10 years, we, we're not a district that has maintained a balance in a rainy day fund. We have, we used the rainy day fund, I believe, for the first time at the beginning of the Great Recession, when we had a shortfall from the state on our funding of almost $4 million. And so that indeed was a rainy day, and we all agreed that that would certainly be an appropriate time to access a rainy day fund. And so we did. And so now we have another rainy day. And, but we're really, we'll be recommending transfer of funds to the rainy day fund for two reasons. The first is, is the, due to the impact of the COVID pandemic, the report says we're at approximately 2.2 million. We're probably pushing closer to 2.5 at this point. And so first, we would use rainy day funds to offset the additional costs as a result of the pandemic. But secondly, and prior to the pandemic, had already anticipated making a recommendation to establish some cash reserves in the rainy day fund. As the boards are aware, for years, we've had a goal of maintaining a minimum balance in our reserves. And I'm talking specifically now the education fund and the operating referendum fund of 8%. But I'd like to see us get to about 12%. And this current crisis can serve as a reminder that most times, fortunately, we don't need reserves. And, but when you need them, sometimes you really need them. And this would be a good example of that. And so I think I'd, again, want to emphasize that our 8% is a minimum balance, not, not really the maximum. And I, I would recommend that we would look toward more of a, maybe a 12% balance. And that's still relatively conservative. It's not unusual to hear recommendations of a, of a two month. And 8%, by the way, of course, the math of that is, and it helps to explain it, that that's one month of, of our operation. And so it wouldn't seem unreasonable to have a savings account or reserves of one month's worth of expenses. And so 12%, of course, would, would move us up from that. So in addition to have a little more reserves for additional financial stability, we also believe and know that Standard and Poor's would prefer to see our balances a little higher. And they remind us of that whenever, every time we approach them for a rating for bond issues. And so we already have a very excellent rating, but there is a possibility that they could look even more favorably on Carmel if we had a little more cash reserves. And so for those reasons, we're, we're making the recommendation. Now, in the case of the rainy day fund, nobody's giving us any more money. So it's a rainy day fund, revenue that goes into that fund comes from our existing funds. And in this case, would come from our operating fund. It would serve no purpose to take money out of our education fund, for example, and put it there. We're trying to support that fund. So in the statute provides that funds that are unneeded, and you're defining the unneeded part, and therefore also unencumbered, which, you know, having no other obligations to those funds, they're, they're available for the board to put in a rainy day fund. Now, you can't put unlimited funds in there. You can't put more than 10% of your, of your overall budgets. But we're not talking about anywhere near, you know, that amount of money. But, but we would like to eventually, and we don't anticipate this happening in, you know, the next year or so, but really don't know, given the COVID situation. But, but a longer term goal would be to put some money in and actually leave it there as a cash reserve. And so with that, we will make a recommendation to initially move $3 million from our operating fund. And I would stress that there's always, you know, a balance. And those funds, while they're not encumbered, we certainly would use those funds for the, the intended purpose of our operating fund, which is to primarily for facilities and facility needs and/or technology needs. But given the current crisis, we do feel that the needs now, that those needs outweigh needs outweigh the, the other needs that we would otherwise use these funds for. And thus, the, you know, the recommendation. So we're not asking for approval this evening. We'll bring it back at the, you know, just for discussion tonight, and we'll bring it back later for a vote.
Well, thank, thank you, Roger. This is not the first time we've heard that we would be getting this recommendation. So we appreciate all the work that has gone into it. Do we have any questions from the board? Lynn?
So you say initial transfer of $3 million, is that, is the transfer after we approve next month? Or the transfer will be at the end of the year?
Well, it would be before the end of the year. Once we start, if we, as we move forward with that process, well, there's two or three things that we'll need to do. One is, is that we'll ask the board to amend our, you're required to have a rainy day fund resolution. And we'll, we'll be asking to amend that resolution because they're, they're minor amendments. But when it was established, we had different funds. We had the capital fund and the bus replacement fund and so forth. So just the terminology changes from that, in general fund, that now, the amendment would change that to bring it to current. So it would refer to the operations fund, the education fund. And also, those funds, in order to have access to them, they would not only need to be transferred, but also appropriated. And so we'll ask for that as well. And, and then there's a hearing involved with the appropriation process, as you know.
Thank you. Pam?
Yes, you said the current amount we've used for COVID is more like 2.5 million now?
Yeah, close to that.
Okay, do you see that amount increasing?
Well, a week or two ago, I didn't see it increasing. But, but, so my point being is it's like everything about COVID, it seems, you know, it's hard to tell from one day to the next what's going to happen. But when we gave opportunity for parents to change from, say, virtual to onsite, that resulted in the, the need for an additional teacher, for example. And, and so I'm, I'm certainly not aware of any major additional costs. And, but there, you know, there's no way of knowing for sure until we get through the process, but-
I was just wondering if we think 3 million is enough for the rainy day fund, seeing how fast the COVID money keeps going out?
Well, I think it's enough for now. And if it, if it were not, or actually, we'll be, later, we'll be making a recommendation for additional funds. But should we, and so if we find that, you know, there's a considerable change in the, in the COVID expenses, that could have an impact on what we would recommend. But I, I believe that the 3 million's sufficient at this time.
Roger, just to clarify that. So the, the COVID costs are really, we're expecting this one time. And the rainy day fund is more long-term based upon hits we may have from revenue that we would normally get if the state doesn't change their formula or something like that?
Yes, in fact, I'm pleased that you brought that up because I would take the opportunity to emphasize that one of the reasons that Carmel has not maintained a reserve balance in a rainy day fund is that the fund is intended, in my estimation, for what we would call one-time expenses. And I would encourage the board and make it very public that a rainy day fund needs to be seen as, just as the name implies, that it's, that it's in, and like a savings account at home, it's for, it would, it's there for, as a reserve in the event that there's a unforeseen, limited, you know, whether it's one-time event. Because, and the reason for that is, is, now it's changed a little bit, but you know, for years, when we had our capital projects fund, you had to have a plan in order, you couldn't just raise money and then have no idea what you're going to do with it. So, so the process requires that you have a plan and say, you know, this is how we plan to spend. And the only way that you can consistently have unused funds is if you frankly inflate the plan. And then guess what, at the end of the year, you know, all the money's not used, and then you can transfer it. So we would not want to, you know, be in that kind of a position where we would be relying on a rainy day fund to support recurring needs, is what I'm saying. And so it indeed is intended for something like this or someone unforeseen. Now, having said that, though, I believe that the likelihood is, is that the financial impact of, of this pandemic, similar in a way to the Great Recession. I mean, the causes are completely different, but, but I very much doubt that when we get, start to get past the pandemic, that the financial funds that are available will just immediately go back to where they were. Well, you know, fortunately, many people will, for example, they'll be able to go back to their regular job. But as you know, this, this crisis is, is impacting unfortunately, some companies where they, they go out of business. And so there's no job now to go back to. And so, so it may take a while. And, and we may fortunately be in a position where we may be able to help our educational fund and the needs and services provided by that fund with a combination of, mostly still from state resources, of course. But we, I believe, will be in a position to supplement, to some extent, the, the negative financial impact of the pandemic. And so, and that may be more than one year, but it should not be looked at as, you know, kind of forever additional money. So.
Thank you, Roger. Katie?
Can you remind those watching and the board too, how, so out of the 2.2, 2.5 million that we've already spent, how much has the district already received from the CARES and FEMA Act?
I believe it was around $235,000 each.
Yes, relatively speaking, that is about the amount, is about $235,000. So in the context of the size of our school district, it's, you know, we appreciate anything that we get, but it's, it's not huge amounts of money as compared to what, what our needs might be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leila?
I do not have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger. Next, we will move to discussion on the proposed, on House Enrolled Act 1003, a proposed resolution. Dr. Beresford?
Yeah, we have an interesting, an interesting scenario to discuss tonight, and that House Enrolled Act 1003 was an education matters bill with a lot of different things in it. And, but one of the things that was in it, it provides that the state board may grant an application by school or a group of schools that request to waive compliance with certain statutes or rules. And so what that became, it's kind of based off of some of the deregulation work that was done. And that's been going on for several years in trying to give schools some relief from so many regulations and so many things that cost us actually funds to do it. And it kind of hurts our efficiency at times. And instead of going for like one thing at a time, the thought process was to, you know, to deregulate in a larger group, you might remember. We had a, there was, I think it was House Bill 500 several years ago, that was trying to, to really kind of get rid of some of the antiquated, you know, regs that are out there. So what's happened is one group of schools has already made that application to the school, the state school board, Skateboard of Education. And the way this process works is that it would start with the school board doing a resolution authorizing performance-based accreditation waiver. And you can do it for four different things: to improve student performance and outcomes, to offer school flexibility in the administration of educational programs, or improve the efficiency, the efficiency of school operations. You can promote innovative educational approaches to student learning, or you can advance the mission or purpose of the school or group of schools. And so what this waiver would entail is you would fill that, you'd, we'd have to do a board resolution. And then we would do an application, most likely with a group of schools, to be able to waive some of the, you know, some of the things in Title 20. Now, some examples, specifically that were at the, the last group that did the very first time through on this, they asked to waive professional development rules that can be waived. An example of that is every year, we have to do training on, to identify and deal with criminal gang activity. And so our, all of our teachers have to go through, in this case, a webinar to learn about that or read a policy. And so there's some things like that that just don't apply to our, our particular setting. And that could be waived, that, you know, that requirement to do that. So that would be an example of that. So professional development pieces, you know, some of those can't be waived, but there are some that we might want to do differently, or that we might want to do every other year instead of every, you know, every year. I think, I can't remember, Dr. O'Stryke, did we have like, was it two hours of professional development that had to be done at the start of this year, straight? It might have been, it was a long-
At least two hours. I think it was probably closer to three.
Yeah. And so a lot of that could, you know, maybe relieve. And it's always at the start of the year when teachers are trying to prep and get ready to go and that sort of thing. Another thing that they wanted to waive was the days of attendance so that, and you convert to minutes. Now, that doesn't really affect us too much because as a performance qualified school district, we can go with minutes rather than days. But that was in theirs. A big piece of it was the definition of what a virtual school is and to, that was a strategy, I believe, to, to get funding, full funding for virtual programs caused by COVID-19. The state board took that in their own hands. And, and so I believe that'll probably be dropped when they evaluate that first group that went through. And then there's the annual performance report, which is a hefty lift and, and really doesn't, I don't know who reads it, to be honest with you. But it's a lot of work. And there are some other redundant reporting that's required. And then, so anyhow, that's what people did. And so what we, what we could do is to do a resolution and join with some schools and either look at the same things that the other group of schools did through, or we could evaluate what's in, in Title 20 or 511 AC that we think would be an advantage or to make, you know, not only Carmel Clay Schools, but, you know, a group of schools more efficient and save us money in the long run. So I wanted to bring that to your attention because it's an opportunity. We have worked with legislators on deregulation and that sort of thing. So there's also a part of me that, you know, that, you know, we would be supporting some of our legislators that are supporting us, you know, by getting in the, and being part of this, this group that's taking advantage of this, this opportunity we've been given through House Enrolled Act 1003. So with that, I know this is kind of a weird, you know, discussion point, but this actually is a discussion topic because the question is, is this something that we might want to explore and possibly participate in? So I'm ready for your questions.
Katie, go ahead.
Can you go into a little bit more about group of schools? So are you, is that like, I'm just making these up, is that like, we would go in on this with like Noblesville and HSC? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, it could be really a wide variety of schools. I can, I think the first group had small rural schools, bigger suburban schools. So, but it could be just a group of, you know, from Hamilton County or in our central Indiana area if we wanted to.
And do you need to go in with others, or how does that play into this process?
The law says that you, a school or a group of schools can do it. And so this is kind of groundbreaking because this is the first, the first group that went through was just recently. And I don't even know that they'd been, that's been determined yet, you know, the request. So there's a lot of unknowns to it. But the law says you can go through as a school or a group of schools.
And then my next question is, is more of a comment. I, I love the fact that there could be some proverbial red tape removed from our teachers because we want them to be focusing on the classroom and making themselves even more outstanding. But could you give us a couple other examples of, besides the, what this could do for our students? Like, I love the innovative educational approaches. What's an example of something that that could mean?
You know, I don't know. You know, one thought I had, and I don't know if it applies or not, so we'd have to get really some legal advice on it. But for instance, one of the challenges we've had with like some of our, like students that want to go into like an apprenticeship program or something like that, where the instructors aren't certified teachers. And so without them being a certified teachers, you can't get, you know, credit for that as a graduation credit. And a lot of the people that teach, you know, some of the more construction-oriented things like welding and plumbing and those types of things, they're certificated people. They've been certified, but they don't have a teaching license. So that puts a barrier there. So maybe that's something we could get some relief on. I'm not sure if that would or not because I have to evaluate whether it's in Title 20 or AC 511. But, but anyway, when you talk about innovation, that's the kind of thing, is what, what are the rules that are keeping us from giving opportunities to kids that we may want to waive? And so that would be something we could, you know, go through. So it'd be kind of interesting for our team and even groups, you know, some teams from maybe, you know, our area and say, what are some things that could really make us more efficient and pave way for better opportunities for our kids?
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Any other questions from the board? There being none. Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Next, we will move to a discussion on program of studies course changes. Dr. Dudley?
Yes, thank you. So this evening, I bring to you a program of studies course changes for our high school for the 2021-22 school year. And each year, we go through the process with a curriculum advisory committee that is made up of teachers, parents, administrators at the high school, where each department reviews their courses that they offer and then make recommendations for new courses, for modifying the courses, or for possibly deleting the courses. And we're, we always keep in mind that we want to make sure that we continue to have a rigorous program of studies for our students that offer many choices based on their interests, but then also following the guidelines for graduation pathways and making sure that our students have multiple opportunities to meet those graduation pathways requirements. And so this evening, I'm excited to bring to you several new courses, modified courses and deleted courses from our different departments at the high school, to include business, engineering and technology, English, family and consumer science, math, science, as well as our special services department. And some of the highlights of these courses, as I said, we want to make sure that we're continuing to provide a variety of choices for our students that also are very rigorous for our students. In our business department, one of the courses that they are proposing as a new course would be the ACP Business Administration. And ACP stands for Advanced College Project. We have several courses that are in the ACP course area. And these are courses that the students take at the high school, and they're dual-credit, that they receive IU credit. And so the students that would enroll in this course would be eligible to receive dual credit for X100 or Intro to Business Administration from IU School of Business. So that's an exciting one that they are suggesting that we add to the program of study for the business department. In engineering and technology, we have several new courses that are very rigorous, to name a few. Aerospace Engineering Project Lead the Way. We have several Project Lead the Way courses at the high school in our engineering and technology, as well as in our science area. And the Project Lead the Way courses are extremely rigorous, where our students receive dual credit through Ivy Tech. They're very hands-on courses. And this aerospace engineering would be a, And this aerospace engineering would be a, an upper level course that our students that really thrive in the Project Lead the Way courses would have the opportunity to take. Some other upper level courses that our students in their interest would be the architectural drafting and design, as well as in our building and trades is another course where one of the proposals, these are second level courses for our students, but one of the proposals for the construction trades and would be to build a tiny home. And our architectural and drafting and design, there may be some collaboration there where they actually design it and then our construction trades actually build the tiny home. So it's really very exciting areas in the engineering and technology. In the English department, we are proposing some very big changes. And these changes really tie into our literacy program evaluation. As you'll recall, last year I presented the recommendations from our literacy program evaluation committee. And two of the major recommendations were access to diverse voices. So our students can not only affirm their own identity in the literature that they read, but also be able to have windows to the world in the literature that they're reading. And then also another recommendation was making sure that our students have lots of choices and the volume of reading lots of different texts. So in our English department, and I'm going to put this up, we are proposing actually to, so we are proposing to actually delete English 11, which was a full year course. And our students then in English 11, in 11th grade and in 12th grade, they'll have lots of different choices to choose from, to fulfill the four credits that they need to earn over the two-year period. And so this goes in alignment with our standards. Our curriculum is based on our Indiana academic standards. And the standards are developed through grade bands. So we have grade bands of 910 and grade bands of 1112. So our students would have the opportunity to take, if they were taking, having lots of choices, they could take one semester courses or they could take a variety of full year courses in both 11th and 12th grade. So the full year courses are not changing except for one. So our students in 11th and 12th grade could have the opportunity to take AP Literature or AP Language, AP Seminar, AP Research. AP Research that is also blocked with AP Statistics. IB English 1 and 2 and IB English 3 and 4. Or the one change we're proposing is American Literature blocked with US History. Currently, we have English 11 blocked with US History. American Literature currently is a one semester course, but the IDEE allows us to teach that in a two semester course. And so the recommendation would make that a two semester course and then we block that with our US History. If our students were very interested in more of a humanities perspective, they would still have that option. However, if they would like to have a variety of choices, our students could take, they would need to take one semester of either Advanced Composition. This is a course we currently have that is only open to 12th grade students. We were, we are suggesting that we open this to 11th and 12th grade students so they could take Advanced Composition in one of the two years. Or they could take W131, which is an ACP Composition where our students receive IU credit for freshman English from IU. So they could choose one of those composition classes and then they could choose three other courses from Column B. Some of the new courses we've, that we are suggesting are, is the Linguistics Course, Ethnic Literature, Genres of Literature, Themes of Literature. And the genres and the themes of literature really will look at the choices that students and teachers are interested in. And they plan on having these, these will be more flexible themes. So for example, they may have students very interested in graphic novels. So one of the courses, sections may be surrounded around the genre of graphic novels or biographies or whatever, different genres. And so they plan on surveying our students, our current 10th and 11th grade students to see what are their interests in the themes and the genres. And then they would build those courses based around students' interests. And this is really important to help our students to make sure that they have lots of different choices and also lots of reading a lot. And we know that the more that students are interested in what they're learning about, the more they're likely they're going to continue on with that reading. So we're very excited about the changes in English. And then some other courses that, just to highlight, in the family consumer science area, we are looking at adding Level 2 courses for our students that want to fulfill their graduation pathways in that CTE concentrator. And so we're looking at adding a Level 2 in our early childhood education, as well as our human and social services where they can complete their graduation pathways. And in math, we currently have multi-variable calculus that we are looking to pair with linear algebra, which would be the first semester, and then multi-variable calculus would be the second semester. They would be two survey courses that our students that have an interest in math could take both of those courses together, which would really help our students that have that interest in the area of math. And then in science as well, we're looking to expand our IB courses to offer a standard level course for IB Biology. Right now, we offer the higher level courses. But this would open up opportunities for our students that are getting the IB diploma as, as well as the IB certificate. And then also another course in science would be the Advanced Science Ecology Course. This course really came out of interest from our students. With the graduation pathways that came about, one of the areas is all of our students needed, one of the ways to check off a box in graduation pathways is to participate in project-based learning. And so what we did was we developed project-based learning for biology. And most of our students in their freshman year take biology. And we had a project-based learning project on ecology. And many of our students got very interested in that and they wanted to continue to study that. But then maybe they didn't want to take the AP Environmental Science, but they would still have an interest in that. So this course came out of the interest from our students. And then we also have several courses in our special services department. And these would be the final year for our, our applied courses for our 12th grade students, so our students that are getting their certificate of completion. And so they include our Applied English 12, our Applied Health and Wellness, Applied Economics and Applied Government. So as you can see, we're very excited about the choices we're giving our students. We feel like this will really help improve our program of studies to give them even more choices and make them very rigorous. What questions might you have?
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. It always amazes me the offerings that Carmel High School offers our students from potentially everything that someone could think of. There's the ability to learn more and take that class. So I will open up to questions from the board. Katie?
Really just have a comment. I just want to say that I'm so thankful. I love when I see course deletion. There wasn't a lot of interest, so we're going to adapt. I think it's really good to like, that we are, take that approach of, you know, this didn't work. There wasn't the interest and we're going to try something else. I love the list of different options that our students have because, like adults, if we're not interested in what we're doing, we're not going to excel as much. But at the same time, having the requirements of teaching them the things that they need to have to be successful in the future. So I really appreciate you taking that approach of balancing interest versus balancing the need of the things that they need to learn. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Katie Lynn?
Thank you very much for explaining why we are eliminating English 11 and then the English Elite. So I asked a question that in the email, you know, why we, so you propose, so, so the current program of studies has English 9 through English 12. And your proposal will eliminate English 11. I can see the whole structure of senior, I mean junior, senior year is a block, you know, is, is a couple of years here. And this list does not have English 12, right?
So our student, we don't have an English 12 course currently. Our 12th grade students, right now, they have the opportunity, they take, they can either take Advanced Comp and then they pair that, that's a one semester course, the Advanced Composition. And then they pair that with either speech or debate or they could do etymology, creative writing, classical literature, biblical literature. So they would pair that with a literature course. They have those choices now. But we don't have a full year of English 12 currently.
I see. Thank you. Pam, go ahead.
Yes, could you put your chart back up? Okay, so is this chart basically for the advanced students or is this for all students?
This is for all students. So Advanced Composition is the name of the course. This is a, just a regular general education course that our students take right now in 12th grade. That is the composition course that if you're not taking W131 or one of these full year courses, you are required to take Advanced Composition. And it's a senior level, junior.
Okay, but what about the students who are at risk or the students, the average student? Because all I see is AP, AP, AP and IB.
So our, our students that are our average students or our at-risk students would take Advanced Composition. And then they would choose from speech, debate, creative writing, etymology, classical literature, biblical literature. Those are all regular gen ed courses.
Okay, but they still have to take Advanced Composition?
The name of the course is Advanced Composition and what that.
But it's, it's, it can be geared towards the students.
The, the title is, it's not ninth grade or freshman composition, but it's, it's geared towards 11th and 12th grade students. So it's advanced, it's not from the beginning of high school, but it's the title of what our, nor our, right now, our 12th grade students that do not want to take any of the AP or IB, they, all of our students take Advanced Composition, just like all of our students would take English 11 that don't want to take the AP. It's just, it has the term advanced. And it's similar to the term of Advanced Ecology, the science course that we're proposing. It's not, it's advanced in that it's not a freshman level or sophomore level course. It's an upper junior or senior level course.
Maybe it needs a new title. Okay.
Thank, thank you. Next, we will move to first reading of policy 2132 Reduction in Force/Recall in Certified Staff. Dr. Dudley?
Yes, thank you. So the policy committee was shared changes, or Dr. O'Stryke shared changes with the policy committee on our policy 2132 Reduction in Force. And those changes were in alignment with making sure that we were in line with Indiana code. And as you can see in the policy, there was one code that we were missing that we added. So this policy was brought to the policy committee. Dr. O'Stryke actually made a appearance at our policy committee and shared that with us and shared those changes. And then he, we also discussed this with our CTA because it does have to do specifically with our teachers in that reduction in force. And so we wanted to bring these changes to the board as a discussion. And in the next board meeting, we will bring that as a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Do we have any questions from the board on this recommended change of policy? There being none, thank you. We will move from discussion to reports. The first report is the student data report. Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. So this evening I'm going to share some student data that we're looking at. And this is some long-term data that I'm sharing with you from our students in the years from winter of 2018 to winter of 2019. And then we looked at data from winter of 2019 to winter of 2020. So we use our data in a variety of ways. You know, and the data that I'm sharing with you is coming from our NWA MAP data that we've been using since the, I believe, since 2015 school year. We started using our MAP data. But the data can be used in a variety of ways. We can use it at the student level where we're looking individually at the students. And MAP, NWA MAP is designed to really look at what are our students ready to learn? And so that's when we drill down and we look at each individual student and we have a whole continuum of learning. And we determine, okay, where are the strengths of the students? What is the student ready to learn? And how we can use that data to really fine tune and get that instructional match for each one of our students. So that's one way to use the data. Another way that we use our NWA data is at the school level. So where they look at the school level, they look at the strengths. They look at areas of need at the school and areas of reading and math. And then they determine, they use that as one data point for developing their school improvement goals. That's another way of using the data. And a third way to use the data is, I'm going to share with you, is really at a very high level, at the district level. And so we're looking at this data to determine where are our strengths programmatically. We're not looking at this as, at the individual students, but we're looking at what are the strengths and what are our areas of need programmatically in the data? And looking at overall trends. Many times what happens when we look at it from this high level, from the district level and also from the school level is then we, then we have other questions that we need to continue to drill down and look at certain student groups. We need to drill down and look all the way to individual students as well. And so looking at it at all three different levels leads to other questions that you might have as you continue to use this data. So in this first slide, what this is showing you is this is looking, again, I said, this data is looking at data from winter of 2018 to winter of 2019. So we're looking at a year of data and then comparing that to another data set of our students from winter of 2019 to winter of 2020. And this data is our students in kindergarten through eighth grade. We give NWA both reading and math to our students in the fall and then also in the winter of each year kindergarten, starting in kindergarten all the way through eighth grade. Just a little note, in our middle schools this year with COVID, we did not give NWA this fall. And we'll reassess that in the winter and determine if we want to continue with that in the winter. There were just too many obstacles with the hybrid schedule and with the virtual schedule. Our administrators felt as if tabling that for right now would be a good thing to do. So we did not give that. We did give it in the fall for our elementary students. And our virtual students did take NWA virtually. We, you know, had protocols sent out. But we'll have to look at that data to determine, you know, knowing that they took it under different circumstances than our students that are in person. And so we'll, we'll look at that data as we, once we get all of that data put into our systems in place. But coming back to this data, you can see in our achievement data that we have for both reading is in the blue and math is the yellow or the gold. You can see our achievement data has stayed about the same. We do see a slight dip in our achievement data in math from our 1819 data to our 1920 data where we were at 81%. And this is the median score of all of our students in the district. It's down to 79%. But what you can see on the other side is the growth. So the first two sets of bars are the achievement. The second two sets of bars shows the growth of our students. And this is looking at their percentile. And so you can see that the growth in comparing the 1819, 18, winter of 18 to winter of 19, the student growth was at the 53rd percentile for both reading and math. We saw, see a nice little jump, especially in reading in the growth from the winter of 19 to the winter of 20, where it jumped up to the 57th percentile and the 55th percentile. So we are excited to see that even though the achievement stayed about the same, we did see a little bit of a jump in the growth looking at those two groups of data sets. So this next set of data looks at our four-year district growth. So again, it's comparing winter to winter for each of these years, 16 and 17, 17, 18, 18, 19, 19, 20. So the 1617 data, you can see the percentile is very, it's, it's a 63rd percentile of the data. Then you can see a little, a dip down to the 56, 56th percentile, 53rd percentile, and then back up to the 56th percentile. So one of the things to keep in mind when you're looking at the percent. So one of the things to keep in mind when you're looking at the percentiles of their growth pieces, the, between the 1617 and 1718, the national norms for NWA changed. And so one, it, it, one of the reasons you see more of a dip from 1617 and 1718 is because those norms changed. They, they, every five or six years, they look at those national norms and then they recalibrate them. So this year, when our students receive their fall reports, and we'll send us out and explain this to our parents, but the national norms have changed again this year. And what they're seeing nationally is they are seeing actually a dip in that achievement a bit. And so some of their, what that means is their percentiles may be a little bit higher or lower, but it's still comparing it back to those national norms. So that's one of the reasons. But you can see that we did have a dip from 1718 to 1819, but then we're back up to that 1920, it's at the 56th percentile. So what does that look like in both reading and math? And so here, this chart shows you the different percentiles in the reading and math and for the growth percentiles for the different years. And you can see with our reading, we jumped to the 57th percentile as compared to the comparison of 1819. So that was a nice, that was a nice jump in that reading area, too. We came back up to where we were from 1718. So now, this is looking at how many of our students are, are above average or below average. So what this chart shows us is a comparison of our students in reading for both 1819, 1920, and then the, in math, 1819 and 1920. And so as you know, data is broken many times when you're looking at those percentiles. They're broken into different quartiles. And you have four quartiles and the national average, you would expect to see 25% of our students in each one of the quartiles. 25% in the top quartile, 50% in the two middle quartiles, and 25% in the lowest quartile. And you can see our students in Carmel, we do, which is not a surprise, but the majority of our students are in that top quartile. So in math, for example, in our 1920 data, you can see 58% of our students are in that top quartile, where we have 36% of our students are in the two middle quartiles and 6% of our students are in that lowest quartile. So you can see, we have many more students that are above average and average than you might see nationally comparing that. So then, what does that look at as far as growth? Are our students growing equally based on the quartile that they're in? And so what these two charts show is it shows the growth percentiles from the comparison of winter 2018 and 19 in the blue chart, and then the comparison of 19 and 20 in the gold chart. And so as you can see, also then comparing the two, our students now are actually growing more than they were in the 18, the comparison of the 18 and 19. So you can see, we have, see a nice jump for our students in that lowest quartile in the winter of 1920. So I'm looking at the gold chart. We, you can see we have, our students in the lowest quartile are growing at the 63rd percentile. So that's really a nice jump from the last comparison at the 53rd percentile. So our students that are the furthest behind, you would expect, we want to see them grow faster because we want to see them catch up. And we can see that we are closing that achievement gap with these two comparisons. As well as, so our students in that lowest quartile are growing the fastest, they have the, you see the most growth. But even our students in the middle two quartiles and the top quartile are still above average. Where when, when NWA looks at the growth, you're looking at the 50th percentile would be exactly average. And we're above the 50th percentile in all three quartiles, which is a good thing. And this is the median of all of our students. So this last slide shows as we're looking at our students, their achievement and their growth percentiles by race, ethnicity, as well as gender. And as I said, at the 50th percentile, that's where you're right at average. And so you can see our students, we're looking at several different groups of students, our Asian students, our Black students, our Hispanic students, our other students, so this would be our multiracial students, our American Indian students, as well as our Pacific Alaska Native students, and then our white students. So you can see, the first two rows here show the achievement of our students, broken up between female and male. And then the last two rows show the growth. And then the first row is reading, math, and then the reading, math in the growth area. And you can see at anything that was below the 50th percentile, I highlighted in red. And so you can see that we, in the achievement area for our Hispanic males, that's an area of concern at the 43rd percentile. And then in the area of growth for both reading and math for our Black males, and then our, for the area of growth for our Hispanic females, those are all areas of concern that they're less than the 50th percentile. And we're right at average would be at the 50th percentile. But one of the things, looking at this, this is just looking at the comparison of our most recent data, of our 1819 data. The chart I did not put on here because it would have just been way too much and you would have been looking at me like, what are you talking about? But one of the things I did notice is some of our changes, like for example, in our, the growth for reading for our Black males at the 48th percentile in our current data, that is actually up from the 45th percentile from our last comparison. So even though it's not where we want it to be, at least we have seen a little bit of growth in there. And the same with our students, our Hispanic female students in the area of reading, they're at the 57, 52nd percentile right now. That is way up, they, they were at the 45th percentile in our last comparison. So we are seeing growth even though we may not be exactly where we want to be. As well as another piece that is way up is in our Hispanic males are currently now at the 58th percentile in the area of reading for growth. And in our last comparison, they were all the way down from the 44th percentile. So even though we may not be exactly where we want to be, we are seeing some areas in both the areas of achievement and in growth. And one of the questions that Mrs. Fannenberg sent right before the board meeting was, what are we doing about this? What, what, how are we helping to close that achievement gap? And so, and there's a variety of things that we are doing. One of the things that we're doing is, was in my last presentation in our program of studies. We're making sure our students have voice and choice in their learning. And then this is not only in the courses that they're taking at the high school, but then also we're making sure that our courses all the way from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, our students have those opportunities to really have some choice and voice and have that student-centered learning happening across the district. And that might be, that's really including pieces where as simple as, you know, what types of books do you want to read in kindergarten? And they pick books for their book boxes and they have a variety of different books to read. To other areas of where students may be working on a project-based learning activity that they have choice in and they're, they're working to solve a real-world problem and they're collaborating with each other and they're, they're learning about that along the way. So they have a lot of voice and choice. So that's one way that we're looking to close the achievement gap. Another way that we're really looking is that we're ensuring that we have those identity-safe classrooms. That we're making sure that each one of our students have that sense of belonging and feel safe in their classrooms. And we do that through creating that safe environment, creating those relationships with the teachers, creating relationships between other students. We've talked, we've had different board workshops on that whole social-emotional piece. Many of our schools are incorporating conscious discipline within their pieces. And that's really about creating that environment where our students are feeling safe and that they really understand that problem-solving of that collaboration with each other. There are so many important pieces of that. And that, that's a big part of, it's not just about the academics, but closing that achievement gap is making sure that we have that identity-safe classrooms happening. Another area that we're looking, that we are continuing to work on is that making sure that our students have that just-right instruction throughout the day. And so for some of our students that are lower in certain areas, we're making sure we are providing those intervention pieces that are set specifically based on the student's needs. And using that whole formative assessment cycle to make sure we understand what those needs are. And so that's using information, that it might be information that we're observing from the students. It might be information, it might be a, an exit ticket or what have you. We're taking that information and then we are designing the learning for that student based on how that student is responding so that we can drill down to their specific needs and close that achievement gap. Another area, so it may be very targeted instruction for that student in a very specific intervention. It may be additional time in an area where we're adding additional time in the area of reading, where a student might need more time to learn those, uh, learn how to read. It's not, will they learn how to read? It's, they just need more time to learn how to read than maybe some other students. And so we're combining all of those pieces. We're really looking at also making sure that the diversity and inclusion, we're going from that strengths asset rather than looking at a deficit. So when we think about, and we're doing a lot of work, and Dr. Bearsford, I know has been talking with you and will be having more information on our diversity and inclusion piece, but making sure that we're looking at it from, you know, embracing that diversity in our classrooms and looking at it from the strengths of what all of our students bring to our classroom and not looking at it from a deficit standpoint is another way that we're working on closing that achievement gap. That was a lot of information and I hope I answered some of the questions for Mrs. Fannenberg. But what questions might you have?
Well, thank you, Dr. Dudley, for the report. I see Pam has a question.
Yes, when you look at this chart, do we break down students also by those students who have been with us from kindergarten all the way through versus those move-ins? Because those would all be categorized in one, in our one group. They're not split.
So currently, this chart is showing all of our students.
Right.
But yes, we do, at times, we may dissegregate the data even further down to looking at, okay, how many students have been with us? Like in elementary school, when we're looking at I-Learn data, we may look at our fifth-grade students, how many students have been with us from kindergarten on? How many, you know, have been here at least three years? And we, we drill down, too, to look at those trends as well.
Because some of the move-ins may be bringing that data down.
Um, some, some can, but it is, you know, our students come to us and they're bringing their very best to us. And so it's our job to make sure that we are taking our students from wherever they're at and moving them forward.
Oh, I understand that. But I was just looking at students that we have served from kindergarten through, are they achieving really much better than what is shown on the chart?
Well, it, it depends. I mean, there are areas, yes, and there, you know, but right now, I don't have that level of detail in this chart. But in times past, where we have drilled down and looked at that, we've seen some areas that, yes, they were achieving more. And then some areas that, no, we still had areas of weakness that we needed to work on.
Okay, that's what, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Katie, do you have a question?
I just have a comment. I appreciate you sharing this information. I know one of the requests that the board had was that we wanted to hear the good, the bad, and the ugly. We wanted to know where we were succeeding and where we needed to work to improve. So I appreciate you sharing this and pointing out these areas of improvement because as a board, that's something that we really want to know is, how can we make this better? So I appreciate that. And you did answer my questions in your dialogue, so I appreciate that.
Lynn, go ahead.
Uh, I don't have any questions and I have a comment. I'm, I'm really glad, glad here to see that even those groups here, they are currently temporarily underperforming. They're still improving over time, the growth, as you mentioned before. And I'm also glad to see that our district recognizes diversity as an asset to enrich student learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move to the Monthly Financial Update. Mr. McMichael.
Takes us through August. You can see on our Education and Referendum Funds that through the month of August, we're really right on target with where we would have projected. We ended the month in these two funds with a $4.6 million balance. That balance will continue, will go down, as you know, until we, we receive additional funding later in the year from our local referendum. Also, this, this number is a little misleading because of COVID. And at this point, we have, those additional expenses are reflected in this report only since, most of them since school started, but nevertheless. And we will eventually make an adjustment for that before the end of the year with that rainy day fund that we referred to before. See that as compared to last year, our balance was 4.9 by the end of August, so. But after the adjustments are made, we'll be pretty close, maybe a little ahead, actually, of where we were last year. And then same with our operating fund, at the end of August, in this, the cash balance here is not as reflective and as consistent as it is with our education fund because this has a lot of expenses. Education fund, as you know, is primarily salary and benefits. So those are much more comparable than a fund like the operations fund where we have construction projects and a variety of things that are not necessarily regular every, every two weeks. But, but nevertheless, you can see the comparison here. We're at $2.4 million in the balance and it happens that last year we're about $2.4. That's probably as much coincidence as anything else. And so I'll, I'll stop there with this report. As I said, it's overall, we're, we're tracking really pretty much where we would have projected today.
Thank you, Roger. Do we have any questions from the board for Mr. McMichael? No, thank you. Next, we will move to Board Member Reports. The first one is a Legislative Update. Pam?
Thank you. I will try to make this quick since we're running a little bit late. I went to the ISBA Fall Conference and I was the Legislative Delegate this year. And I was able to see the legislative priorities prior to them being adopted. And I'm going to present those to you right now. These are the legislative priorities from Indiana School Board Association. And we will look at these and decide which ones we would like to use to formulate our own priorities, which are more specific to Carmel, once we get through these. Also wanted to let you know that there is a possibility, this will be a budget session this year. And they are looking at possibly moving to the convention center to try to social distance and instead of doing it at the State House. So that will be interesting to see how that works. And there's also talk, maybe rumor, but there's also talk that they won't start the session until March, which is going to be rather hard because the budget has to be finished by the end of April. So I don't know how this is all going to play out, but it'll be interesting to keep an eye on it as it, as it moves on. Indiana School Board Association has 1,690 members. 290 school corporations are part of the Indiana School Board Association. And so these are the legislative priorities in order of importance. Number one, in. Number one, increased financial resources to support K-12 students. So financial, the budget is set every two years for school corporations, which makes it really hard to budget into the future. But this would be the funding for 2021, '23, and they would like it to remain at or above what their current level is with annual increases to keep pace with inflation. I know this is going to be a difficult thing to do, and I think at this point Governor Holcomb has promised to try to do his best to fund the Indiana schools. Indiana ranked 34th in the nation in 2017 for instructional spending per pupil as compared to the U.S. average. The state tuition support appropriations have not kept pace with inflation since 2010. They want to maintain the complexity index funding, provide categorical funding to overcome COVID-19, appropriate 100% ADM funding for virtual education participation, even if more than 50% instruction occurs online during the 2020-21 school year. I know this is something that we're all keeping an eye on. Make sure that that goes through. And they want to count all seniors, even those graduating after the fall semester in the spring ADM count. So even if they graduate in the middle of the year, they want to continue receiving monies for those students in the spring. And to modify the eligibility criteria for the On My Way pre-K program to enable more families to participate. So that's all under funding. Number two, funding to close the homework gap for students and the digital divide facing school communities. So they want to extend school corporation networks to and through schools into the school community. They're saying that right now 170,000 Hoosier students lack internet connectivity in their homes. Number three, targeted temporary civil liability immunity for school officials. Right now, we have schools being sued because they did virtual learning and schools being sued because they didn't do virtual learning. So right now, they're trying to provide, they would like to provide targeted, limited civil liability immunity coverage during a pandemic or other public health emergency declared by the governor to school corporations, its officials, and its employees. Number four, which I hope is one that really, they really do this one. 2021 iLearn testing waivers and hold harmless provisions for spring test scores for A through F school accountability grades. So what they want to do is reducing the state testing requirements temporarily or permanently, which would be good, will save the state money and minimize disruptions to invaluable classroom instructional time. They're saying because the virtual students would have a hard time taking this test at home, and this wouldn't not, this would eliminate the possibility of parents also participating in the iLearn test. Number five, remote school board member participation in board meetings. So they want to amend the open door law to permit school board members to participate in school board meetings virtually for health reasons or for travel reasons. So this would be a permanent thing to allow school board members to participate in by roll call vote in a meeting. One that is carried over from last year is the capital referendum net tax rate ballot language. So they're talking about the language on the ballot for capital referendums that school corporations put into place. Number seven, TIF reform, inclusion of a school board member representative on the county and municipal RDCs. They're saying that local school board representatives should have voting rights on local municipal or county redevelopment commissions. TIFs can have a negative financial impact on school corporations and erode revenues available to local units of government according to a 2016 study by the Center of Business and Economic Research at Ball State. They're saying this is a sensible policy proposal given schools are one of the most important drivers of economic growth in a community. There were 935 TIF districts in the state last year that captured approximately $29.5 billion in incremental assessed valuation. Number eight, support the teaching profession. Studies suggest that fewer persons are pursuing teaching careers. So they want to enhance teacher compensation. They say that Indiana ranked 26th in the nation and last among our neighboring states in terms of average teacher salary during the 2016-17 school year. However, because we did increase money last year on the funding, the metric went higher, and so this allowed teachers an increase of about $2,000 per teacher last year. So that's a good start. Number nine is one from last year, procedure to set school board member per diem and compensation. Currently, the law allows a school board member to receive up to $2,000 a year for their service as well as a per diem for attending board meetings. This $2,000 limit has been in place since 1983. So it'd be a good thing to maybe possibly change that. And the other thing is that school board per diem rates are set by the Indianapolis Marion County City-County Council. So they would like the, ISBA proposes to authorize the Indiana State Board of Education to set the per diem rate in the following years. Number 10, they have 11 this year, exempt school facilities from mandatory use as voting centers for primary and general elections during a public health emergency. We all know why that's a good idea. And number 11, this is also from last year, deregulation initiatives. They support efforts to reduce, streamline, and/or repeal K-12 education laws that are not necessary. Those are the legislative priorities put forth by Indiana School Boards Association.
Well, thank you, Pam, for being our representative today at that session for the Indiana School Board Association Conference and for sharing those priorities. And as we move forward, we will evaluate how we want to move forward with our legislators and what our priorities are. Do we have any questions for Pam?
Mr. Krishna, I might add that we have expanded a little bit. About everybody, all the assistants superintents over there have met with legislators already this year. And I've got some appointments coming up with, you know, some legislators as well, especially in the area of funding. So we're continuing building those relationships and being a resource for those legislators so that we can avoid unintended consequences and also have good communications with the lawmakers. So we're doing some, a little more investment there.
Oh.
Also, we have several legislators in our own district that are up for reelection, so there could be a transfer of power. So, you know, we're watching that very carefully as well.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Dr. Bearsford. And as we decided, as a reminder, we decided last year not to really have a list of what our priorities were, but to be more of a resource to our legislators. And we will evaluate how that went and decide how to move forward for the upcoming session. So thank you. Next report is Carmel Clay Park's department report. Lynn?
I have three updates here from Carmel Clay Parks and Recreation. And first, on Saturday, Monong Community Center began the phase five of the reopening plan as the state moved into stage five. Major changes include monthly annual memberships are available for purchase online and in person at the Monong Center. Day passes are also available to buy in person at the center. Several amenities are now open. So that's the first one, Monong is open in a new stage. And second item is new park in northwest Carmel. So earlier in September, Carmel Clay Parks and Recreation officially acquired and closed on more than 25 acres of land in the northwest corner of Carmel. The land will be used for a future park. Currently, Carmel Clay Parks has only one park west of US 31 in southwest Carmel, and that is the West Park. So purchase of the land used the revenue generated from park and recreation impact fees. A series of development will take place in the next two to five years. And last one to report here is about Laystar attendance here in our district. So Laystar, the ESE service on Laystar days is provided by Carmel Clay Parks. We have in September, total of 382 students attended the Laystar ESE service and from all our 11 elementary schools. This is a free service to our families. Our parents will need to pre-register their kids for this service. District pays for the service using a federal grant. So that's my update.
Thank you, Lynn, for keeping us updated on those important items from our great partner, the Carmel Clay Parks Department. Do we have any questions for Lynn? No, thank you. Next, we have a report on the Carmel Redevelopment Commission. Katie?
Hi, and I won't be sharing my screen, Colleen. In the interest of time, I'm going to, I've already shared with you already. I serve as a city commissioner on the Carmel Redevelopment Commission. As you know, I am appointed, I'm recommended by the board, but appointed by the city mayor to serve to your term. Yesterday, excuse me, last week, I presented at the most recent redevelopment meeting a construction update of our elementary schools. This was what I was going to show you tonight, but Roger, you kind of stole my thunder a little bit with your pictures. But it is shared on our school website where you could see my presentation, where I provided an update to members of our community about our two new elementary schools. I am a non-voting commissioner, which means I, although I cannot partake in votes, I can represent their school district on any items that could potentially affect our district or property that we do own. Are there any questions?
Do we have any questions for Katie? No, well, thank you. I, we appreciate your service on that board as well, and it's another relationship that we value very much along with the other city involvement that we have, whether it be the police department or the mayor or the CRC. So we appreciate the positive relationships we have with those agencies, and they value the school district, and we value them. Next, we move to superintendent's report. Dr. Bearsford.
Thank you. I'll buzz through this as quickly as possible, but a lot of cool things going on in the district. And, you know, as Lynn mentioned, stage five, I'm hoping that we'll at least be able to get a little bit more involvement with some of our things going on. But the big thing going on this week is homecoming. And so we've got homecoming going on at Carmel High School. And first day was Mask Monday for custom and themed masks. Tuesday, today was Tie-Dye Tuesday, and I will say that our own Roger McMichael participated and maybe the only guy in the district who actually had that shirt in the 60s. But he was looking sharp today. And then tomorrow is Super Safety Wednesday, so you can anticipate some gloves and hazmat out and maybe some goggles and, you know, big time masks and stuff. Thursday's All Denim Thursday, so I'm sure there'll be people in the office that can get advantage of that. And then Friday, of course, is Blue and Gold. The parade is on for 1:00 on Friday, and we'll be social distancing, of course, encouraging that. They're also doing some, you know, with the pandemic, some things are going to be different, and they're doing a homecoming promo video competition. So kids are putting together videos and submitting them, and they'll be showing those. I think that'll be a lot of fun. One tradition they're keeping hold of is a scooter race, but the scooter race will be done at 6:30 p.m. on Wednesday. And so good to see that tradition continuing. And then a big hit last year was Friday Passing Period Fun. So they had a lot of different activities going on during passing periods. So of course, they had to, you know, banagl those so that, you know, we could still do our social distancing stuff. But a lot of it has to do with music and faculty doing a lot of fun things. And so it's pretty special. Parade at 1:00, and then the football game. Of course, the band will be there. Going to introduce the court at halftime and the queen, and they're going to have a most decorated car and some other class competitions. And then Saturday, they're going to come back with the virtual homecoming dance from 8:00 to 11:00. Remember, we had a virtual prom last year, so I think we're going to follow up on that, and it was a lot of fun. So anyhow, homecoming is going on and a lot of activities. And I'm glad that, you know, it's not like, it's not what we want, but it's better than not, you know, having it all shut down and close down like we experienced some in the fall or in the spring. Also want to point out some of the things from sports and activities. Cheerleaders hosted the Cheer Up Indiana competition this weekend, and I saw some videos from that. It was pretty impressive. But I like Cheer Up, you know, Indiana. I mean, I thought it was a great name. Boys and girls cross country swept the Mick titles. That race was at Pike, and girls golf played second at regional, so they're playing the state finals on Friday and Saturday at, just down the road there at Prairie View. So good vibes for the girls team there. They've got a great, strong team this year, and hopefully they can get over the hump there and win that thing. Our tennis team beat the number-two team in the state, Jasper, in the last regular season match, and their sectional will start tomorrow. Girls soccer had a rematch with Noblesville, which was the state finals game last year. And unfortunately, the Millers got us again. So, but watch out, you know, those girls have great resolve, and I'm sure they're going to come back at them hard. A fun fact for girls soccer, the JV Blue Girls Soccer Team went undefeated this year, and no one scored a goal on them. They were, they were goal-free. So shout out to the Blue, JV Girls Blue Soccer Team. Fantastic job there. And we did have some sad news for the Greyhound family and condolences to the family of Greg Gosserd, who recently passed away. Gosserd is the first assistant athletic director at Carmel High School. He was a government and econ teacher for 32 years. And Jimmy Enskeep said that he was a tireless worker for kids in Carmel High School, and he will be forever at Greyhound. So condolences to his family. And then activity-wise, we had one act plays last week and into the weekend. And so, of course, it was very limited attendance, but it was good to see kids back on the stage. And then if you've been tracking, the band played at a football game, and they had another band, you know, performance. So we're trying to make the best out of the situation where the competitions were all canceled for this year. Kids Coat Drive was last weekend, and as you know, Carmel's the major contributor to that. And so we want to thank everyone who donated coats, hats, gloves, and winter wear. But if you still want to participate, it's not too late. The Coats for Kids team will be collecting coats at Noble Hill High School from 10:00 to 2:00 this Saturday, October 3rd, infant adult sizes. And you can donate anytime at Carmel United Methodist Church or Merciful Health Center and at Our Lady of Mount Comfort. So I appreciate everybody chipping in on that, and there's more to be done to keep our kids warm this winter. Had redistricting down, it looks like that Roger covered everything. And I really do encourage folks to get to that website. And we've got a link to the Cooperative Strategies website on our website, and there's also some frequently asked questions there. And it's going to be, right now, it's pretty bare bones, but as the process continues, it will get more and more information and data in it, and will be a real good resource for everybody. COVID numbers last week, we had four positive cases at the high school, which was, I think, a new low, and which was real good. We had one at the middle school and one an elementary student. And I can't remember what our number was for staff for last week, but we had a rough weekend. And so we had, was it five last year? And we probably have 10 to 12 already out this week. And we probably have 10 to 12 already out this, this week due to some exposures. So a little tougher week on the staff this week. Wanted to also report that as we had communicated to parents that we would allow students, elementary students, to switch learning programs at nine weeks. We ended up needing to place 405 students back into our in-person program. And I just wanted to throw a kudos out to our elementary principals and to our curriculum instruction and assessment team for their hard work in finding spaces for the students while maintaining, you know, our social distancing guidance. And then we ended up with 32 students who wouldn't fit into their home schools. So we have openings in sister schools where there's room, and I really want to throw a big thanks out to families who volunteered to go to a different school to make it work. And now unfortunately, there were some folks that we just couldn't accommodate everybody's wishes, and I hope we could keep everybody at their home schools. But the balance is very delicate and very difficult. So they're putting on a lot of final touches into that and really still working on those, to get it all completed. But it looks like we're going to be able to pull it off and still keep a decent ratio and, and keep that social distance where it needs to be. Received a lot of questions asking about high school and middle school, and, you know, do we have, what's the plans for moving from a hybrid to a full in-person, you know, program at the high school and the middle school? And we don't really have a specific timeline for that because it's really more environment, influenced by the environment. I will say that we are very concerned that if we bring all the students back under the current guidance on contact tracing, with the contact tracing protocols, we're pretty confident we'll be sending large numbers of students home for 14 days for every positive case. So even with four positive cases, it could be a hefty number if we have all the students in there, because social distancing will be very, very difficult if we, you know, double our numbers in every building. The other, the other thing that we've heard concerns about is possible surge in COVID-19 when all, when people are pushed indoors because of colder weather. And they, you've heard the scary stories about the cold and flu season, that sort of thing. Hearing, I'm hearing various scenarios of that. I have one doctor said that they're anticipating the flu will be less prevalent, the regular flu, because everybody's wearing masks and trying to do their social distancing. So it actually, this is, does work. So really, it's a lot of factors before we would make that decision. We hope to receive some updated guidance from the medical community, and we'll keep, continue to monitor that moving forward. We want our schools, we want our kids back in school full time, too. But at this point in time, we don't have that guidance. We really are going to need some relief from the contact tracing pieces of that in order to be able to make that move. But we'll, we'll keep you posted. Then my bell ringer. The bell ringer for, for today is something near and dear to my heart, and that is October is, is mental health month. It's also suicide prevention month. And, and I'm real proud to, to share some information about some things that are going on in October. And, and first off, there's going to be a virtual mental health fair on the 19th through the 23rd. And our mental health folks, led by, you know, Stephanie Whiteside, they're going to use social media to bring awareness to local supports and resources related to mental health and wellness. And they're going to post small video clips and links to these local businesses. In the past, we've had them at the high school, and people could come in and see all the different resources that are in the community. But since we can't do that this year, they're actually kind of doing it virtually through these videos. We're also going to create a temporary webpage for parents and students that list participants and, and information about them. So it'll also be just a resource where you can see the people who would have been at the, at the live one. And then on the 22nd, they have scheduled and will pre-record behavioral pediatrician, Dr. Nerissa Bauer. She shares important strategies to increase resiliency in children and adolescents during times of stress and transition. So really well-timed information. And this will be shared on social media and, and at our, on our virtual mental health fair webpage. So they're accepting parent and student questions anonymously during that time via a Google form. Also, they're going to host a educator resiliency seminar on the 8th and the 13th. Those will be identical programs from 4 to 5 p.m. And what they're going to do with Carmel Clay School Student Services and Ascension St. Vincent Employee Assistance Program, Rachel Frieden, Heather Baumgartner will, and they're both social workers, are going to explore self-care, balance, preservation, and overall wellness. And so the educator resiliency seminars, designed with educators in mind, as we manage our personal needs and relationships, our professional growth and preservation. So there'll be two workshop dates available, and then there'll be information for staff to take advantage of that. So appreciate them doing something special for the staff. And then kind of a cool thing that's going on is, this was a resource created by one of our high school counselors, Allison Harbor, and social workers, Sarah Knup, Knup, and, and some students. And what they've done is they've built a virtual mindfulness room. And so you can go to this, this website, and, and what it is, is there's, they have one for the high school, one for the middle school, and they're working on one for the elementary students right now. But it's a link where you can go and do mindfulness activities, and it's just all in one spot. And so they're calling it the